Call to order, the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. It is 6:32 PM. Present this evening, we have Commissioners Jake Pearson, Lisa Malkovich, Ned Hacker, Sue Wilson, and Jeremy Lowery. I am Mary Patterson. I'm the Chair. Excused is Travis Nay. And from staff, we have Jared Hall, and Zach Smallwood, and Susan Nixon with us. Oh, and Brian Farnsworth in the back. We want to welcome the public. Thank you for coming and attending our meeting. We're always grateful to have you here participating in planning commission meetings. Some etiquette items, just to quickly review for you. We would ask that you take a moment to silence your cell phones. If you do need to take a call, we would ask you to step out in the hallway. When the time comes, if you would like to speak to an item on our agenda, you will be invited to come up to the podium. And we ask that you state your name and address into the microphone for the minutes. So we will begin with our agenda items. Item number one is approval of minutes. We don't have any minutes from our August 19th meeting, so we'll move on to agenda item number two. Are there any conflicts of interest for the Commissioners on our agenda this evening?
No.
No.
I know the Hanson's and the McDonald's very well, but it won't impact my decision.
Great.
And I also know the Hanson's, but that won't affect my decision.
Okay, and I have no conflicts either. Okay, agenda item number three, approval of findings of fact. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any, we had three, conditional use permit for BMW of Murray, a conditional use permit for Orion Auto, and a conditional use permit for Murray Square Commercial Building. Is there any corrections or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit to Rick Magnus Young Electric Sign Company and Matt Lysenby, BMW of Murray, requesting an electronic message center for the auto dealership addressed 4700 South State Street. A motion to approve findings of fact for a conditional use permit to Serhiy Benz and Lana Benz to allow vehicle sales within the CD zone on the property located at 32 East Fire Clay Avenue. And a motion to approve findings of fact and design review for a conditional use permit to Kimball Investment to allow the development of a 4,800 square foot multi-tenant commercial building with drive-through on a pad site in the Murray Square Mixed Use Development.
Great. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number four, Zone Map Amendment. Are the applicants here this evening?
Yep.
One. Okay, great. First, we'll have a staff report by Susan Nixon.
Thank you. This application, on behalf of the Hanson's and McDonald's, who currently live on Majestic Pine Drive, Alma, Karen, McDonough, and Mark, I'm sorry, Alma and Karen Hanson and Mark McDonough. The parcels are actually behind properties that are technically landlocked. As you can see on the map up here, they're highlighted in the blue. The address for those parcels are 5829 and 5837 Majestic Pine Drive. Just to simplify things, because it's kind of hard to explain, so the map helps a lot. The McDonald's own lot number 12, kind of on the right there, and they have a home there. Then next to them is lot number 13, which is jointly owned between the McDonald's and the Hanson's. And then lot 14 is owned by the Hanson's. The properties we're talking about are the properties in the tan color that are highlighted in blue. The one is jointly owned again by the Hanson's and McDonald's, and then the Hanson's own the other parcel. The little bit of history as to why these, how these came to be. This is the result of four other subdivisions that have been developed in this area over the years. And after the four have been developed, these two were the remnant parcels. And I can give you a little more history of that in just a minute. This is a couple of photos of the vacant parcels in question. And you can see the little cottonwood creek that is bone dry. And so it's, it's very, the creek's there, it's heavily wooded. Their intent is they want to keep and maintain this area for their enjoyment. They also will, they also have the intention of combining the two parcels with their lots in the Erickson subdivision. But in order to do that, the zoning has to be changed so that it is the same as the R18 is in the Erickson subdivision. And then they would come back in later, assuming the zoning is changed, and apply for a zone, subdivision amendment and lot consolidation. And they may have changed the boundary somewhat, but that will happen later. This illustration is kind of, gives you a little bit of the history here. On the left is the Erickson Place subdivision. That is R18. And I'm looking at the illustration on the left. Then we have the Erickson Village subdivision, which is a PUD. The Erickson Village subdivision is really the one that started, that changes zoning to the RM10. Way back when in the 70s and early 80s, this was all A5, agricultural, five acre minimum. When the Erickson Village PUD developers wanted to develop this area, they changed the zoning to RM15C, and then ultimately RM10. The Erickson Place subdivision was changed to R18. So after it's all said and done, after those four subdivisions, Erickson Place, Erickson Village, Creek Park, and Longfellow, after all those four subdivisions were done, the remaining parcels are the ones that are highlighted on the right in the red. Does that make sense? So, I'm going to go back to the original. The RM10 zoning allows for single-family homes, obviously, because the other subdivisions are RM10 and have single-family homes. But this makes it, so their request makes it consistent with our general plan and consistent with the future land use map. And then it gives them the opportunity to combine them with their lots that they own now. So this is kind of a cleanup proposal, and also would get rid of the landlocked parcels and brings things into compliance with the future land use map. So, we are recommending approval for both of the parcels to be changed, and ask the planning commission to forward a positive recommendation for approval. And we would need two motions, one for each parcel separately. Just to note, we did send out 65 notices to the surrounding neighbors. We only heard from one adjacent neighbor, and he just wanted to clarify what it was they were requesting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any questions for staff? All right. Would the applicant please come forward to the podium and state your name and address into the microphone for the record?
I'm Alma, wow, this thing is, I can't hear it very well over there, or here. Anyway, my name is Alma Hanson. I live at 5837 Majestic Pine Drive.
Great. Thanks for being with us tonight.
You bet.
Do you have anything that you would like to add to staff's report?
I think it was beautifully presented.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much. We will have you sit down, and we'll open this up for a public comment regarding this item. There's anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item? You can do so by coming to the podium. And we ask that you state your name and address into the microphone for the record, and that you keep your thoughts to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the Zone Map Amendment for the parcel of property generally addressed, 5829 South Majestic Drive, Pine Drive. Do we do them two separately?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll do two separate motions. Sorry, I should have reminded you about that. I have a motion from Commissioner Malkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the Zone Map Amendment for the parcel of property generally addressed, 5829 South Majestic Pine Drive. Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Pearson. All right, then we can take a vote.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lowery.
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So that motion is approved. And is there any discussion or a motion on our second part of this Zone Map Amendment?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the Zone Map Amendment for the parcel of property generally addressed, 5837 South Majestic Pine.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Malkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the Zone Map Amendment for the parcel of property generally addressed, 5837 South Majestic Pine. Is there any discussion on that motion or a second?
I'll second.
Great. I have a second by Commissioner Pearson. All right, we can take a vote.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lowery.
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So that is approved also, and both of those recommendations will move forward to the City Council. So they will, they're the next step in this process. Thank you so much for being with us. All right, we will move on now to agenda item number five, a conditional use permit approval for the planned unit development and preliminary subdivision approval for Murray Heights PUD, address 5448 South 700 West. And the applicant is with us, right? First, we'll have our staff report from Zach Smallwood.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair. I appreciate that. Like you had mentioned, this is a request for 31 townhomes on a 2.69 acre site, roughly on 5400 South and 700 West. The zoning is RM15, which allows up to 12 units per acre as a base density. Couple photos that Mr. Prince provided that kind of shows the property as it currently sits. It's pretty vacant right now. There used to be a single-family home there, and has been demolished, I believe, last year or earlier this year. So before we get started, I kind of wanted to start off with where we started as these, in these townhomes. I'm going to go through kind of the iterative process that we've gone through with Mr. Prince and Ivory Development. So this was the initial site plan that was submitted to us. You can see that, and these were all about 40 feet, four floors, townhomes. So after we initially got this submittal, we went back and said, you know, we aren't comfortable with this. We really think that these should be moved off the street quite a bit. So for sake of time, the second site plan and the third site plan, I've shown both. The third site plan is the one that you guys received a packet for, and we have since moved to this last site plan, which is this one located here, where the only three-story units are the three in orange on the top right-hand side of your screen. The rest are two, so this, let me rephrase that. There are three stories with a rooftop deck, and the rest of them are two stories with a rooftop deck. So that's kind of where we have come from, was this, and whoa, two to this. So I think we've really, we've worked really closely with Ivory to make sure that where you're buffering the neighbors to the south, making sure that those are fairly separated, just making sure that, so that we can do the best for the community at large. While we're on this site plan, I also do want to make mention, I apologize, I should have mentioned this in the pre-meeting, Mr. Prince did have a small meeting with some neighbors. And one of the concerns that came up were the, these two parking stalls here. And Mr. Prince has agreed to remove those two parking stalls. They are still meeting the required number of spaces for the development with the removal of those two parking stalls. So we don't really have any concern there.
Zach, can I ask you a question for clarification?
Please.
The last slide where you were talking about parking stalls, it looks like there's four to me there. Are they just removing the two closest to the house?
Yep, just two closest to the house.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is the preliminary plat. These are going to be condominiumized units. They are for sale. They're not rental units, from what I understand from Mr. Prince. Here's a preliminary landscaping plan. Lots of trees, lots of foliage going in in this area. I think it's going to be an improvement for the, for the area as a whole. And I put in an extra slide of the landscape pen, so don't mind me. So there are, for, there are these existing, these are the elevations shown. So you have the, these are technically going to be the three-story with the rooftop deck. What you're seeing here was an older product, but there actually will be a second, another floor down below where the garage is located. And then the remainder of these are the two stories with the rooftop deck. To help kind of put it into perspective, I kind of created these, these photos and outlined them with the color corresponding to the site plan. So the blues, you can see, are located next to the blues, and the purples, the purples, and that kind of orangish color is there. Also, I went through, here's the floor plans for each of the colored, different colored units. So you can see that there's two floors, then the loft, the small loft area with the rooftop deck. This one is the additional area, so you get either, the first two floor plan pictures are either or. So either you have a rear-loaded garage or a side-loaded garage that corresponds with some of these that, like, for example, these are side-load garages where these ones are rear-load garages. Then also, on the second floor, you have your master bedroom and two additional bedrooms. And then you have your rooftop loft area and the deck. Then lastly are the tallest ones, which is you have your garage with your entrance, and then the second floor has the living and dining, third floor has the master bed in one bedroom, and then the rooftop deck area on the, on the top there. So also, just a couple of things to go over. We sent out 75 notices to the, to the public. We received, you received two, in, not in your packet, but by the submittal deadline. We did receive an email comment that we will read into the record during the public hearing portion. These are approximate, the two-story with the rooftop deck is between 34 and 36 feet high, and the three-story with the rooftop deck are 40 feet high. The major things to be aware of in the planned unit development side, those, so it was listed in your packet, and I apologize, I should have put it in here, was the code requirements for the front yard, rear yard, and side yard setback. So I'll just review those real quickly. Front yard is 25 feet. They've proposed 20 feet. The rear yard is 25 feet. They are proposing that 25 feet. Let me go back to this, because this will make it a little bit more clear. So the interior side yard for this property would be the south side. So we require a minimum of eight feet. The applicant has requested a side yard of 20 feet. So they are requesting that additional setback on that south side. The closest homes, so this one located here, is approximately 35 feet, I believe, to the property line. And then additionally, further back from the actual house. Then the corner side yard to the north, the code requirement is 20 feet. The applicant has requested that that be reduced to 10 feet. This additionally allows them to push those up further, closer to that northern property line, and further buffer from the south. Then height is up to 40 feet, and like I mentioned, these range between 34 and 40 feet. Real quick, I'll just go over the parking. The required parking is 78 spaces. They had initially provided 82, now they'll be at 80. So it does meet the requirements there. So in summary, we are recommending that you approve a conditional use permit for the planned unit development, and then grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Murray Heights PUD subdivision at 5448 South 700 West. I kind of just talked a lot. So, any questions I can answer at this time?
I've just got one question on the orange building. Are those designed to be parked double-deep in that single-car garage?
Yes, that's correct. They are tandem parking.
Okay.
Which is, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Zach. If we could have the applicant, please come up?
Evening, Planning Commission. Brian Prince, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Brian Prince with Ivory Development, 978 East Wood Oak Lane.
Great. Thanks so much for being with us. Have you had a chance to review the conditions of approval?
I have.
And you'll be able to comply with those? Is there any further presentation or information you would like to give us about this item?
You know what, I think there, I gotta say, your staff is excellent. They are extremely thorough, so there's not a lot I need to go over. I will, I want to hit on two items. I did have the opportunity to meet, thanks to Rochelle White. I want to thank her publicly for kind of rallying the troops and organizing her neighbors. I think we had a really productive meeting on-site, and I was able to better understand the concerns of the neighbors to the south, which was very helpful. One of the items that was in question was the fencing, and maybe Zach, if you can throw up that same site plan, the colorful one? So the question was, on the, on the south side of the property, there is the, the R18 subdivision fencing. It's kind of a checker of different types of fencing along the back of our property. And the question was, does Ivory plan to install a fence adjacent to their fencing? Yes, we do. And one of the questions is what type, how tall? We envision a, like a solid surface precast material, or maybe like a hardy board, solid surface, six foot tall. There was a question whether we would be willing to do an eight-foot tall fence. Ivory's open to an eight-tall fence. I don't know if that complies with the zone, or if that would be...
Yeah, I think my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the commission would have the ability to go up to eight feet, right? So if we just, if...
So I bring that up because I want to clarify, we're open to, happy to do eight feet if you feel that is appropriate. I know that there was a desire from a few of the neighbors that they'd like to see eight feet. Happy to do eight or six. But there will be along the entire length of that southern border running east-west, a six-foot tall solid privacy fence.
Okay.
And then, like Zach mentioned, we did remove the two, two of the four stalls in the cul-de-sac as part of that discussion. And then, you know, I think one item noted, we have spent a lot of time, as you can see, orienting these buildings to the north to give it some space. And that's really the reason we're asking for some of these setbacks, is to accommodate that push to the north. I'm really proud of the design, because I think it does a great job of, you know, what it'll do is maximize the views looking out on 5300, and give it some, some, some space between that R18 subdivision to the south. The space of the buildings on the south side, so maybe if you'll identify, Zach, the U-shaped building on the west, that building, the southern end of that building sits 58 feet away from the homes to the south. And that was a big question, is well, how close are these buildings going to be to the existing homes? 58 feet is a lot. The residential road to the south, Quaking Aspen Drive, is about a 52-foot right-of-way. And so this building will sit farther away from those homes than that public right-of-way on the next block over. To give it an example of scale, and then in that island triangular block, that building sits about 78 feet from the closest single, R18, single-family R18 home to the, to the south. So a lot of this design was driven around providing that spacing and then safe access for emergency vehicles. And with that, I think I'll just open, happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
I have a couple. We talked about the fencing along the south side. Is there fencing on the little corner on the, the west, and then on the north and the east side as well?
I think we will plan to continue that fence in the far west corner. It's that really funny tight triangle. Well, it'll wrap along that west side to the edge. On the north side, there is an existing UDOT fence that...
Chain link.
Chain link that, as you know, is a big no-no to touch. So we can't, we won't touch that. I think we will probably leave it open to preserve those views. If you're familiar with the site, it's up on a bluff. And so I don't think, for now, I think we could, we could potentially look at doing a, like a wrought iron fence, or a, there's a, like a black powder coated metal fence to provide that sense of privacy, but also to preserve the views looking, looking north. We do not envision any fencing along 700 West.
All right, thank you. So another question, like, one of the stipulations or conditions have a right turn lane southbound on 700, so that's great. And another one was to dedicate right-of-way on 700 West for future widening of that facility. How much right-of-way did you, are you planning to dedicate to that 700 West widening?
That, that's a good question. It's been designed, as far as the square footage of what has been dedicated. The good thing that we had going into this is, as you probably know, this is not the first application on this property. So your team, Trey Stokes and the team, had a lot of design, they had some CAD files. They were able to hand to us and say, FYI, just get ready for this. And so we had some engineering files that we were able to incorporate. So we didn't have to do much work on the alignment that your staff wanted along 700 West. I don't have the exact square footage that's being dedicated. The gross square footage of, or the gross acres of the properties, over three acres, the net subdivision is 2.69, I believe.
79.
2.79. And so there's a fair amount that is...
And the reason I ask is, those homes, particularly the four on the south end, they look like there's, there's good setbacks there today. Sidewalk, turn lane, and if that all comes west, should 700 West be widened?
Yeah.
It gets pretty close to those, well, and the one on the north corner as well, gets pretty close to those five units.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. So those buildings will still sit at the net 20-foot setback. So with the dedication, they'll still be back 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions from the commission? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This time, we would like to open this agenda item up for public comment. If there's anyone that wants to come make a comment about this, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and that you offer new information, and don't restate concerns that have already been expressed. So feel free to come up.
My name is Rex Maury. I live at 684 West, 5465 South, which is just off the map here. Two houses down, or second house down on 5465. A few years ago, the city and state put an island in to prevent left turns into the Smith Shopping Center. Shopping Center, which immediately forced all that traffic down our street. That same island is going to prevent people from being, being able to access this property very easily, which is going to force them down our street, which is going to not be a good impact on our community and our, our neighborhood. What has been done to mitigate that traffic problem?
We will have staff and the applicant address all of your concerns after the public comment portion.
All right. I just, I have probably 20 to 30 people pulling into my driveway every day to U-turn in our street. We have kids all over that street, all up and down the street. It's a dangerous situation. The suggestion would be to extend that island past 5465, so that people going, needing to turn to go north out of this project, or anywhere else except south, be forced down to Anderson, which is a wider street and was designed for that kind of traffic. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Oh yeah, sorry, we had an email. Thanks, Zach.
I almost forgot entirely, so...
Glad you remember.
This is from Laura Lee Romney. So this was submitted today at 5:35 PM. We have the following grave concerns over the traffic ingress and egress from the project onto Seventh West. One, the only way cars can exit this subdivision is by turning right onto Seventh West and going south. Two, there is no access to this subdivision for cars that are traveling north on Seventh West unless these cars make a U-turn at the traffic light on 5400 South and Seventh West to be able to turn back south onto Seventh West and access their subdivision. There's no way, sorry, three, there is no way for cars exiting the subdivision to travel north on Seventh West. Currently, cars frequently make U-turns on Seventh West at the end of the concrete lane divider ending about 5465 South to return, traveling north back to the Smith's parking lot entrance on Seventh West. This will also be the only means by which cars exiting the subdivision can possibly travel north on Seventh West or to access the traffic light at 5400 South. These U-turns create a traffic interruption hazard, especially during rush hour traffic. In the morning, traffic is backed up almost to Bullion Street, waiting for the light at 5400 South to change. Traffic on Seventh West is also very heavy during the late afternoon rush hour. Cars turning south on Seventh West from 5400 South are going to suddenly be backed up significantly while waiting for someone to complete a U-turn against cars traveling north on Seventh West. There should be absolutely no U-turns allowed at this point on Seventh West, and signs prohibiting such U-turns should be clearly posted at this location. Four, however, this, this then brings up the practical matter that many of the people living in this new subdivision will then exit by turning right onto Seventh West and then immediately turning right into the Walden Hills subdivision at Aspen Heights or Walden Hills Streets, and following those streets back around to Seventh West where they can turn left or north onto Seventh West. Alternatively, they will turn left onto 5465 South and then turn north onto Allendale Drive in order to access and cut through Smith's parking lot to then turn north on Seventh West, or to continue straight to exit onto 5400 South. In summary, the entire traffic flow from this new subdivision as it currently exists is a ridiculous solution that will create a major problem, not only for those who live in this subdivision, but also for the entire Seventh West traffic flow, both north and south, and for the neighboring subdivisions by causing increased traffic on these side streets. This plan could not possibly be approved by the Murray City Traffic Planning Department. We would request that the Planning Commission not approve the plans for this subdivision until the traffic problem is suitably addressed by the developer. Thank you for consideration, Laura Lee Romney and Brian Romney, 784 Shadow Wood Drive.
Was there any other? That was only email comment. All right, great. Then I will close the public comment portion. Um, yeah, address some of those public comments.
Unfortunately, I don't have a lot to say about them. I will say that in, in the comment that was provided by Ms...
Romney.
Ms. Bro, no, the, the one, Regina Napolitano. I apologize, I'm really bad at pronouncing her name for some reason. That was, that you guys received earlier in the week, had asked for a no-U-turn sign, and also Ms. Romney also asked for that. I, I did have a conversation with the city engineer, Trey Stokes, today, and he is in support of that idea. We just have to do some logistical things, making sure, kind of see where that goes, where, where to best place a sign. Currently, the best would probably be on the right-hand side, which makes that difficult to see. So we, we need to kind of look at that a little bit further. It, it is true that these will have a ride-in, ride-out, so they will only be able to go south. However, 5465 is a public street and people are allowed to travel on it. That's not a great comment, you know, not a great solution, but that might be the solution that we have. UDOT does control the intersection for about 300 feet into Murray City's right-of-way side. And I, I believe we worked with them on the, on that median, that raised median there. So I don't, I don't have great news regarding that, but...
Could that be extended? Could you talk to UDOT additionally and get that island extended further to the south?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, that's definitely a conversation that we could have. It, it would probably become more of Murray City's extension.
That was my question, does you, did UDOT go all the way to the border of their southness, or did they stop short, so if Murray wanted to add?
I'm not 100% sure. That, that, that would be something that I would have to discuss with, with, with Trey and, and the city engineering. But that is definitely something to look at.
They also suggested, like, that some of those intersections get kind of blocked with all the traffic, right? And some, you know, maybe a sign that says, "Don't block the intersections over," and those trying to turn...
Correct.
Right there could actually still make those turns when all the cars back up on Seventh West.
Yeah, and that's definitely, I didn't, thank you for reminding me that, I, I forgot about that. But that's something I can bring up with Trey as well. Because that is on the other side of 54, this, well, near Apple, Applegate. They have a no-block.
Yes.
So...
So that they can get out of that, or their subdivision. Um, I, I was gonna say, and you maybe mentioned this, but, oh, I think Ned mentioned it, that there is in the conditions a deceleration lane. I know somebody mentioned that traffic will back up on Seventh West, turning from 5400 South as they're waiting for people to right turn only into that subdivision, because as it is right now, it's just one lane.
That is correct. There is a decel lane.
Right.
And I want to address that a little bit more, too. I anticipate, so currently, there is a sidewalk there on the long Seventh West, Mr. Commissioner Hacker, that, that, that is going to be part of the dedication, that they are going to be dedicating more land past that existing sidewalk that's there now for, as part of that decel lane as well. So I, I think it's somewhere probably close to 10, 10 to 15 feet, most likely.
Then I would just, remind me, they had originally talked to UDOT about perhaps having an exit onto 54th, and UDOT would not allow that, correct?
Thank you. Yes, that's, yes, that's another point. UDOT is very strict about access on their streets. They are so strict that, that they don't allow them. They actually tried to remove them as much as possible. For example, on State Street, they tried to eliminate accesses as many, as much as possible. And so they hardly ever, unless it's the only access onto the road, will they ever grant an access on their street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. But it is something that we've tried. We've tried to, we've tried to work with them, and I know Ivory's worked with them trying to get an access out, because originally, that was part of the problem. If we come back to this initial submission, that was one of Ivory's ways of trying to get through is to, because fire needs a complete turnaround. So in order to get a complete turnaround, or a second way through, would have been through here. And so they said no.
Mr. Smallwood?
Yeah.
So the public understands, and we understand also, we've all, we've all agreed that some of these ideas for the traffic would be nice, but one is, where does that process occur?
So that would, it would go with the Traffic and Safety Committee. That's attended by Trey Stokes, the city engineer. So since I brought it up to him, and he said that we're, we're going to look into it, that's probably going to come up in, in, in their next meeting, I would assume.
So it's not appropriate for us to handle it here? So by not handling it, we're not ignoring it?
Correct, yeah. It's gonna, it's gonna go through the proper city channels through the Traffic and Safety Committee. But we, we will be looking into it, for sure.
And I think that you may, most of the comments were about the traffic and the right turn, right turn out. And I think that you maybe addressed it, but that in our packets, there was a, a traffic engineer study.
Yep, there was a traffic impact study.
Yeah, impact, that's the word I was looking for. Yeah, so that, those things have been studied and measured and...
Yeah, there was a, there was a traffic impact study that was conducted, and that was, I, I believe it was about 200 trips per day. That's with most of those occurring in the morning and evening hours.
Yeah, and this concludes that 700 West will experience very minimal interruption.
Correct.
That's what the impact study, but I guess it didn't, the neighboring neighborhoods maybe weren't included in that.
And, yeah, no.
Okay, any other things to address from the public comment, or any other questions for staff? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other further discussion on this item? We talked about maybe the addition of a condition for a fence.
And I've got that written out.
Okay, great, yeah. Do you, I think it's up to the commission to do a taller fence, a taller than six-foot, which I feel really comfortable going to eight feet on that.
Eight feet.
Condition. I, I, I mean, what are the other commissioners?
I agree, I think we talked about saying the wording, "up to eight feet," correct?
Right.
In the pre-meeting?
Yeah.
So you want it as "up to" or just "at eight feet"?
Up to.
Up to eight feet?
I think giving us some wiggle room, the addressing the issues is nice. So yeah, say "up to eight feet." I think since the community is expressing interest and the builder is willing to, yep.
Okay.
That's the way I wrote it.
Okay, wonderful. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit for planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Murray Heights PUD subdivision on the property addressed 5448 South 700 West. Subject conditions one through nine, with the addition of condition number 10, which will read, "Applicant to work with staff on the installation of a fence up to eight feet tall on the south property line."
Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve a conditional use permit for the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Murray Heights PUD subdivision on the property addressed 5448 South 700 West with the addition of, with the nine conditions and the addition of a 10th condition, and a second by Commissioner Malkovich.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Nae's not here, so never mind. Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So motion is approved, congratulations. And I wanted to say to the developer before, when we were in the discussion, and I forgot to say that, but as I was reading through this packet, there were multiple times where you, as a developer, have gone above and beyond what was required, whether it's being willing to do fencing or additional fencing, but also additional open space, the willingness to move those taller buildings. Like I just, as I read through this packet, I, I, I really liked the project and I liked the look, and I was really happy to see the places that you, as a developer, went above what was just required of, as the city. So, great job.
Madam Chair, can I, Madam Chair, I agree with you and say we appreciate when the developers listening to the community.
Yeah. Work, work well with those neighbors, that's wonderful. Okay, moving on, agenda item number five, no, that was agenda number five, number six, a conditional use permit approval for the planned unit development and preliminary subdivision approval for Bullion Place, located at 935 West Bullion Street. And we will have our presentation first.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is, as you said, a, a request for conditional use permit and preliminary subdivision approval for a planned unit development at Bullion Place, that's 935 West Bullion Street, the property's highlighted here. You probably recognize that from a couple of other hearings that we've had recently. The zoning was changed earlier this year from the A1 that you can see surrounding the property here in this zoning slide, to R16 on the north part of the property and RM15 on the south part of the property. We'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment, but just as a reminder, this is the property on Bullion Street with the satellite facility currently there. Excuse me. This is a vicinity plan that kind of shows, again, that subject property and the area that's around it. You can see all the single-family homes, the power corridor to the west, the, the Murray City property to the east. And then this is a layover of the single-family lots and multifamily townhomes that Mr. Brodsky intends to develop on the properties. And we'll get into those specifics in the next couple of slides. It is a subdivision, a planned unit development subdivision, that means that there's an open space, and we're using the planned unit development subdivision rules to allow the mixing of the units and then how they interact. And so they're both involved in that plat. It's a single plat for all of the units together. This is a snip from the plat, and it includes, just so you're aware, 20 single-family lots in that R16 portion of the property, in that R16 zoning portion of the property, and a dedication of a public right-of-way, standard public right-of-way. And then it also includes the townhome portion on the RM15 zoning portion of the property, 54 units. I've consistently been saying 74 because that's the total, but it's 54 townhome units along with the 20 single-family homes. We have some park spaces that we'll talk about as well, and some more streets. But this is just to show you, the plat itself will be a planned unit development plat, including both the single-family and the townhome project. The site plan shows kind of where you can cite those homes, and this is, we ask for this kind of thing in planned unit developments, and Mr. Brodsky's provided it to show that the different home plans that he has associated with the subdivision and the single-family lots can all be cited. We'll talk about setbacks a little bit more in a, in a moment as well, but all of these setbacks on the single-family portion are standard for the R16 zone. There's no variations in the setbacks required here. It's to accommodate the mixing of the two units and some of the setbacks on the sides of these buildings from property lines. That, that matters in the subdivision. But all the single-family homes have at least five-foot side yards, and they have the 20-foot front yards and at least 25 feet for rear yards that are required in the R16 zones. There's no variation there. We also use the planned unit development to deal with the lot sizes here. So we'll backtrack a little bit, talk about density, but the lot sizes do not all conform exactly to 6,000 square feet. Several of them are larger and several of them are smaller, and we tabled that out in your, in your staff reports. But there is a total of 6,000 square feet per lot, excluding the public right-of-way that's netted out per lot, although it's not all assigned to each individual lot. The PUD lets us cluster things a little more, lets us move things around and utilize the property better. For instance, we need to line this street up, in this case, for example, with Walden Meadows across the way, across Bullion Street. But that leaves us extra space in the back here, so you wind up with larger lots here on the west side where that space was not usable, but we farm that property, that allowance out, if you will, through the other lots. So that, that's useful for the PUD as well. Overall density, we, we measure density in, in single-family zones like R16 by lot size. So we just talked about that. Density for the RM15 portion of the project, that's at 12 units per acre, and that, the, the allowance is right on in this case for the 54 units. I forget the acreage portions, but that's all in your staff report as well. But the density overall in the project is nine point, I'm gonna forget, 9.24 units per acre when you take all of it into account. So that's slightly, slightly more dense than the surrounding R18 and R110 neighborhoods, but not significantly more. but not significantly more dense to create a, a challenge or an anomaly that we would view that way as a problem. Want to talk a little bit about the streets, just real quickly. Bell Shill that's proposed here is a public right-of-way. That's a standard 49-foot public right-of-way like we use in these smaller, single-family zones. And then Bell Shill gives us access to, I'm trying to memorize these, Colburn, which is a private road, private street that serves as an access for these townhome units. It's direct garage access for these units all along it on the north side. And then it gives access to these alleyways that give you access in turn to the garages for those townhome units. So you have three different street types on the project. The public street, the 49-foot right-of-way that serves those single-family homes and has access to the others. And that residential street section on Colburn, that's that private road. And then it has an adjacent parking, some parking spaces along it as well. So it's a kind of a wider area that's included in it and then those private alleys. 32 feet between the building, 26 feet of asphalt. That gets us our emergency access that we need and gives us room on either side with another three feet for some utilities. That 26 feet and the additional six feet otherwise is something that we've worked on in other projects as well, in these townhome projects. In the, in the space between units for alleys, we don't like to go a lot less than that because of utilities and, and backing distances, et cetera. But this has been, has proved workable in the other projects that we've done. Just also, if we want to talk about the, I want to talk for a minute about the units before we talk about landscaping and buffering. You have two different color schemes and material schemes for the units. This is for the multifamily units, for the townhomes. And you can see the materials there. We've included that in your packet. Good muted tones and then they're sort of muted earth tones with some punchier, darker versions of those same tones for accents. Couple of elevations. There are two different styles of townhomes proposed here. The gabled roof style, you can see that there. And then the two different color schemes. Oops, I didn't mean to do that. So hopefully I can undo it. Great. And then the front elevation, rear elevation. These units are, let's see, I'm going to get, I'm going to get this wrong. I think these are 34 foot, seven inches tall overall height to the top of the peak, right? Okay. So that is within the, the 40 feet that's allowed in the RM15 zone. These are, these are three-story units, but that, under the 40 feet that's allowed and you can see the rear elevation here, the garage loads, rear, all the garages rear loads on the townhome units. The second style, the shed roof style, slope roof style there. Again, this one is 30, this one's slightly taller, 36 feet, 11 inches to the top of that highest point right there. So most of the bulk of the building is not quite that tall. Again, three stories, rear-loaded garages. And I, for some reason, I gave you two front elevations instead of a rear elevation there. But trust me, there are garages on the backside elevation somewhere out there in the world for you to see. Again, the two color schemes as well. The single-family homes, there's several designs that, these are all different designs that will fit on those lots and very different designs have to go on different lots because of the widths. I failed to mention that, but it's in your reports about the lot widths as well. The lot widths are slightly smaller than we require in the normal R16 zone, again, to make the number of lots fit, although they all still can maintain that five-foot side yard with no variations, so. This is the, I want to talk about the landscaping for a moment. There's good landscaping on the project and a couple of things to keep in mind. Along Bullion Street, Mr. Brodsky is going to try to keep some of the trees that are already there. There's a large section of landscaping there that's got some good mature trees and anytime we can keep those, we like to see that happen. So we're very pleased to see that. All those homes that are on Bullion will face Bullion. So you, you maintain that sort of, that same punctuation of single-family look as you go down the south side of the street and the north side of the street that's already there. To the rear of that, again, we have tree lines, streets along all of here, sidewalks throughout. This is the west side, again, where those larger lots are located, where that slope or that area needs to line up with Walden Meadows. And then it also shows you in this little snip here, the park space. We can go back and talk about that in a moment as well. But there's a nice lawn area and, and parks. There's a, an overhead, what's the word I'm looking for? Pergola. There's a kind of a canopy there and some benches, a little tot lot, some playground equipment. And then the cell tower site that needs to be maintained. This is the landscaping section where you're looking at the townhome units. Again, as that road comes around, you have some trees kind of around this detention pond. It's a nice lawn and play area and as a person who lives in a townhome, let me tell you, this is, this is very valuable space. It's nice to have that kind of space when you don't have a lot of lawn of your own to go out to. It's nice to have that communal space. So I was really happy to see that in there. For people to walk along and be in and have some open space in front of their units. It's very nice. Some landscaping again, as we go through, most of this north side, sorry, south side of the private road is taken up with the parking that we need to see in, but that's also, again, very important that we get that parking. We'll talk about that in just a moment. And then you can see that first part of that landscaped playground area and, and park space there at the east end of the property just before you get to the cell phone site that needs to stay. Parking, really quickly. In the single-family homes, they all, they all maintain that 20-foot front yard setback. So you have space in the driveway leading to a garage and they'll have two or three car garages. So there's good parking in the single-family. And in the multifamily portion, these are all two-car garages and we have a few more spaces and we need to hit 2.5 spaces per unit. That's important in these projects. These are, these are three-bedroom, Mike, remind me of these three or four-bedroom units because I forget and I didn't load the floor plans. Okay, okay, great. So yeah, that extra parking is important. We want to make sure that's there. So we do have a lot of good, good landscaping on the site other than that area. And right here on the west, or sorry, that looks like the west to me because it's the bottom of the page. On the south property line, and we'll get into the buffering in just a second, there's a 15-foot setback provided. All of these units face their side yards here. So this is a 15-foot side yard to add an additional buffer space to the south. The only place we have any direct adjacency on this project to single-family neighborhoods that are already existing. And that's important for a couple of reasons. We're going to talk about those now. There's an exhibit that, that Mr. Brodsky did previously while we were going through the zone change to try to address that issue. So you can see that 15-foot side yard setback. It is adjacent to the single-family neighborhood, but they are separated by this large power corridor easement. So there's a lot of space between, and I'm going to go to the next slide that shows the height differential. There was a lot of concern from folks about the height of these townhomes at 36, 37 feet and their yards and their homes. This is the east portion, so sorry, right in here, section AA. Just kind of took two bottom and top sections to show the distance and the height differentials between the properties. You can see this section here. This is the, the townhome units that would be there. Space is about 107 feet to the home. You can see the power corridor easement in the middle, the existing fence lines. This is where the project boundaries fence would go. There is a planned six-foot vinyl fence throughout the project on all the perimeters, except for the front out on Bullion. And you can see there's not a huge differential to the height. Same thing goes for the bottom end, that west end. I got it right that time. This is actually the west on the bottom at this point. So this section here, again, it is a little taller comparatively because the grade changes less, but there is a grade going up as you move south and there'll be a project boundary fence right here as well. Lastly, so you're looking down in this bottom portion, you're seeing that open space that is that easement. Some of the yards have been developed into that easement. I'm not sure what the situation is there, but that's reflected in those exhibits. The fence lines there. This is the project boundary here where that six-foot fence will be and then 15 feet of landscaping that you can see in this area here to the units that all face sideways. And Mr. Brodsky mentioned this during the zone change hearings, but I'm just going to reiterate it here. That top floor, those are transom windows. So they're, they're high up on the wall, six foot plus up on the wall to let light and air in, but not really visibility out or in. So it's privacy for both groups. I thought that was a really good solution to that issue. We like the buffering on the project. We think it's been well done. Trying to think if I missed any points. And I probably did, but we can come back to them if we need to. So you can, you can talk to me about that. We did have, I just, I do, do know the point I missed. We had a traffic impact study for this project that was done as part of the zone change. That, I didn't re-apply that or reattach that to your, to your packets, but you've had that in the past. Nothing's changed about that. It was actually performed for 90-some-odd units instead of the 75 or 74 that will be built there. So it's, it's overkill in the traffic impact study. The environmental is underway. Mike might speak to that a little bit tonight. He was accepted to the volunteer cleanup, for the voluntary cleanup program and the, the plan's been prepared and is being reviewed, I believe. So that cleanup will be happening on the property as well. We have new geotechnical reports that need to be done because there's now different loads and grading plans that we want to take into account. So you'll see that all reflected in the engineers' conditions. We are recommending approval for the conditional use permit, allowing the PUD and the preliminary subdivision approval. It needs to come back for final. We can make sure we mop up any other details that we need to, to do that or anything else you need us to do. The engineers' conditions are all listed here. We had a few from the utilities, et cetera, but those have all been reviewed. It doesn't look that we have any problems providing for the project. And we are recommending approval. Anything that you, any questions you have for staff?
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Can you go back a slide? So those five houses on the end, the ones at west end of Chester Brook Cove, who may potentially be
Right here.
Backyards might be encroaching on the easement in the back. That easement is not part of this project. Nothing's changing the easement, not up for discussion. That's...
The easement is separate from the project. Project doesn't actually share adjacency with any of those properties. It shares adjacency with the easement property and easement is not, I call it an easement, but it's a physical piece of property. It's not going, it's not, they're not touching at all from the single-family neighborhood. So whatever they've done in, in getting leases or, and easement holders or property holders like this for utilities, sometimes we'll let people do that or make agreements or whatever. None of that really affects the project to end, no.
That's my clarification on that because that might be stressful to those five property owners if they hadn't heard that, so.
Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you. Good point.
Well, and I really like that you included that diagram that was in our packet also of the way that those, those townhomes will line up to those properties. I felt like that was really helpful visual and how the boundary that's actually between them, so.
Oh yeah, that's great.
I like that too, just for my clarification. Those diagrams, how close to final are they? This is a preliminary, right?
Uh huh. This is, this is the preliminary subdivision, but most of the work for citing these homes has been done. We, we might see small changes to materials or something if, if, if it needs be, or there might be some changes to a home plan here or there if it doesn't quite fit. But basically the citing for the townhomes has been done for some time. And yeah, I, I would expect these to be, I don't anticipate changes when it comes back for final.
That's good to know because I, I too find that comforting that there is, the height differentiation isn't as great as expected. So, and the fact that it might stay that way is nice.
If any major changes happen to the grading plan, this is based on, the diagrams you're seeing are based on the current grading and drainage plans. If anything changes for that, we can let you know during final, but right now that's the plan. It looks solid, so.
It's kind of interesting hearing this right after hearing the other planned unit development and just how really kind of isolated this really is. It doesn't really need a lot of additional, like the other one is just, I mean, basically those people had been living behind a, or had an empty lot behind them for a long time and now they're going to have a development. So that it felt like it needed additional buffering, needed additional fencing, you know? And this, it really does feel like there's, you know, it's kind of a...
Didn't have quite the same problems.
Yeah, yeah. It's all, it's just because of where it is, some, some of those buffering issues.
It makes that a lot easier to deal with in this case. Although even, even so, I know Mike was, there townhomes with rooftop decks are very, very popular. This is, this is a, it's a gimme to not put rooftop decks on it because they sell. So it's nice for the neighbors not to have to worry about that and...
Yeah, conscientious of those neighbors. That's great. Any other questions for staff before we talk to the applicant? All right. We could have the applicant come up.
Sorry, my bones are a little creaky.
We're grateful that you're here with us tonight.
Michael Brodsky, 84 West, 4800 South, here in Murray. I'll speak to the elephant in the room first. I think everybody here expected 100 people here tonight.
Yeah, we're surprised that there's not a lot of public comment right now.
I am really stunned.
Yeah. Before we move on to some information I think that you have for us, were you able to review the conditions of approval?
Very carefully, yes.
Yes, and you'll be able to comply with all of those?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. What additional information do you have for us?
So your staff report as usual was, was quite thorough. There's just a couple of points I'd like to elaborate on. I want to start with the last discussion item you had about proximity, height. Because we recognize that that was such a sensitive issue, we did some very careful topography. We've had survey crews out on the property and what you're seeing, the relationship of the townhouses to the adjacent single-family homes is a very accurate representation of what we expect to build. You pointed out that this is somewhat buffered from all of the surrounding neighborhoods. If I, I thought the Ivory Homes presentation was quite well done, but if I want to, want to point out one thing, the closest house in that situation was about 30 feet to the single-family development. Our closest house-to-house is 92 feet and the bulk of them are over 100 feet. That is a Rocky Mountain corridor that belongs to Rocky Mountain. It's not just an easement. And that corridor isn't moving. It's not going anywhere. I want to point, point out just a couple of other issues. Just for clarification, the lot size width was done very intentionally. We have two different house footprints with multiple exterior elevations. One of them is a three-car garage, a wider, much wider house. That will be a four-bedroom house. One of them is a two-car garage, which will be a three-bedroom house. By staggering the width of the houses, we're able to create a very attractive streetscape. The second thing that we did, recognizing along Bullion Street, there is, there are quite a few very mature trees. Well, you recognize our density. These, these lots are, are narrow to some extent. And in order to try and save the trees, we extended the front yard setback. So while the front yard setback away from Bullion Street is 25 feet, the front yard setback along Bullion Street is at least 30 feet, giving us a little bit more room to try and save as many of the existing trees as we can. While we are out there doing our excavation, we'll have an arborist out there. Unfortunately, if we disturb the drip line of the tree, we're going to kill the tree. So we want to make sure that what we are trying to save is healthy. We'll take a lot of precautions to make sure that happens. Mr. Hall mentioned briefly the environmental cleanup. You're aware that the site has a little bit of hair on it. We have had our environmental company out onsite off and on now for the last two to three months, working closely with Department of Environmental Quality on taking samples for the voluntary cleanup program. We are completed with our sampling. We are now in, at the point in our investigation, where we're actually putting the cleanup plan on paper and we should be submitting that to DEQ within the next few days. As mentioned earlier, we have been clearly accepted into their program and this is one of our last steps to get the design of the cleanup into them for their final approval. We expect to have that approval by sometime in mid-October and based on that, and it is a condition of the approval here, we expect to start the cleanup activity in early November and be completely finished with that by early January, at which point we'll be ready to start actually doing the development work. Mr. Hall also mentioned the traffic study. We took it one step further. There was a lot of concern about the traffic speeds on Bullion. We asked our traffic engineer, Orion Hales, to recommend some remediation, traffic remediation, traffic calming. He did. We submitted those to your city engineer for that review and concurrence. And while that is not a condition of this approval, I give you my assurance that the remediation methodologies that were suggested, we will be implementing. And so they will become part of our final plan. The rezone that the city council recently granted us, the RM15 and the R16, the mixture of the two zones, as you may recall, was a direct effort to assure the neighbors that the permitted density, or rather the proposed density that we are suggesting here can't be exceeded. And what you are seeing today is actually one home less than what we had originally proposed. I've talked about the cleanup. The gentleman who just walked in is Jacob Ballstead. I'm going to introduce him to you because Jacob is here representing the townhouse builder. He is with Carbet Homes. My company, Hamlet Development, will be... My company, Hamlet Development, will be building the single family homes, but Jacob's company will be building the townhouses. And if you would like to hear a little bit about what they are proposing to build, I would invite Mr. Ballstad to present to you. It's at your discretion.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. We would like to hear from him about those townhouses.
Before I turn the podium over to Jacob, are there any other questions that you have for me?
Yes, I have.
I do have a couple of questions. I grew up close to this area and when I was a kid, I thought it was like an NSA, you know, compound or something. And when, I really appreciate you doing these elevation diagrams because I asked for that in a previous meeting because I would have swore that this property sat much higher than those other houses. And after I got the packet, I drove over there because I still didn't believe it. And what I did not realize, and because I never climbed over that fence because I thought the NSA was going to get me, is that there is a great big berm around the satellite area. And so my question is on the section AA, and I'm not sure if we can go to that really quickly, but is the, it looks like you're bringing up the grade in that area. Is, is, is the gray, the bottom area, that's where the satellites are sitting now and then you're bringing that up? I don't know how much that is, maybe 15 feet or something.
More than that.
It is more than that.
Yeah.
Okay. But, but this bottom level here is where the satellite sits. So do you know how high that berm sits? I'm assuming you're taking that down, right? Because there's a great big berm on the south side or the, I'm sorry, the west side.
Let me try and give you something to visualize. If you look at the grade at the very east side of the site, where it is adjacent to the power station, that's pretty close to what the existing grade was when this, before this building was built. I don't know the rationale for why they excavated it into such a deep trough to install the building and the satellite dishes, but they did. And they took a lot of the material that they excavated out of that pit and used it to create berms around the perimeter. And they also brought in a fairly significant amount of additional fill material that we have carefully analyzed and are very comfortable is good quality fill for our use. And so when we're done, if you can visualize the grade at the very top of the property and the grade at the very bottom, where it butts up to the power lines, our final grade is going to be almost a straight line from the top to the bottom, which was what it was originally.
Okay.
And when you see it from the street, our final dirt grades will be just a little bit below Bullion, all the way down. If you recall, Bullion goes at a gentle slope, I would guess a seven, six, seven percent gradient.
Okay. Thank you.
Answer your question.
Yep, it does.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. You said if this all, if everything goes as planned, if it's approved, you would start construction in January after the earthwork. When do you think the project would be, would you have houses on the project? Is it a one-year project, a four-year project?
I'm going to ask Jacob to answer the question relative to the townhouses, but I will tell you that on the single family, for just 20 homes, I expect that's going to be less than a year. And because the first 10 of those homes, I think it's nine or 10 of them face Bullion, they're on a paved street with fire hydrants right in front of them. When we start the development work in January, I expect that we're going to be able to pull a building permit to start building those houses, probably February or March. And so this, the houses along Bullion should be completed in late spring.
And I ask that for the neighbors because a lot of projects are taking a lot of time now, so it's interesting to know timeframe. That's nice. And then I don't know if this is appropriate, this question, so if it isn't, tell me it's not. But price range, I think the neighbors would be interested in that too. What do you expect the price range to be for the houses?
I'm going to leave that to Mr. Ballstad as well. And the single family homes, my expectations are the values are in the mid fives to low sixes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Go ahead.
No, go through.
Are you planning still, you had initially, when we did the preliminary on this, you had mentioned you were doing fee simple on the townhomes so they would be for sale owner occupied. Is that still the case?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I know I've been asked that question.
Each one of those townhouses sits on its own lot. They're not condominiums.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. If there's another questions for Mr. Brodsky, we can have Mr. Ballstad come tell us about the townhomes.
Jacob, your timing is, is perfect. Another 10 minutes and you would have escaped.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Jacob Ballstad, Garbet Homes, 273 North East Capitol Street, Selly City, Utah. It's good to be back before you again and appreciate your time and the time and efforts of the staff and the work that Michael's done on this property. Interesting property, nothing left in Murray, but interesting properties. When I first walked this property a couple of years ago and saw the satellite dishes and a big hole, it was really weird. But it's time for the dishes to go and, and time for us to clean up some of the, some of the issues there and, and add some more housing to Murray City. So we're happy to be part of it. As you guys know, we have two other projects in Murray that we're building in, one on Seventh West and one off Leslie Road, both single family projects. And they've both gone, done great. I think the staff has done a good job. I was always very complimentary of the planning commission, the city council on the way they've handled those issues or those projects. So our efforts here, we're trying to design something that's, try to be sensitive to neighbors and we know that along the way, the neighbors were concerned about height, specifically the folks to the south. And you know, the drawings that Michael provided, it's, our buildings aren't really much higher and we're a long ways away. But we have done some things that helped set that, help, help ease that a little bit. The third story windows on the south, on the sides of the buildings, we've made them, instead of full height window, they're just, we call them bullet windows, they're two by two windows that sit high on the wall. So when somebody walks by that window on the interior, they won't be able to see down out the wind that they can see up to the sky, but they won't be able to see down to any backyards or buildings or anything of the neighbors. So I think we're doing what we can there. As it relates to price range, I think pricing will likely start in the low fours. I think it kind of depends on what happens with the market. Market's a weird thing right now and, but I, that's kind of what we're checking now. Timeframe, I think that, you know, we'll probably get a model home done third quarter of next year is my guess. And I think we'll, I think we can build about 25 units a year likely. Again, that kind of depends on what happens with market and labor. Over the last 12 months, the market's been stronger than our labor forces and we can't, we can't build as much as we'd like to. We're restricted based on materials and, and labor. So anyway, but we're happy to be back here again and excited about this project and what it can mean for Murray. So I'll answer any questions, Jan.
Do you want to have any questions? Okay, thank you.
I do have one point of clarification. I read through the staff report and maybe I should address this with staff before, but on one page, on page four, it talks about the building height specifically being 34 seven and 36 11. And then later in the, in the staff report on page seven, it talks about them being under 35. I just want to make sure we're not restricted to under 35.
I round in whatever direction I want to go.
Okay.
Whatever suits me.
I like that.
I wrote that part before I realized that 36 is more than 35. Numbers are not my strong point.
Hey, I, I didn't want to bring this up in a public meeting, but I hadn't had a chance to talk to you about it before.
We're good, we're good at 40 feet.
Okay. That's what I was hoping. I just wanted to clarify. Other, that's the only thing I can even think of to question anything Jared does.
Yeah, good catch.
Thank you, Jared, and Planning Commission.
All right. Well, I am very surprised, but I will open this meeting for public comment regarding this item. Did we receive any email? Okay, we'll do that.
Start with that, give people the chance to filter in.
So this email is from Flint Mulner. Says, "My name is Flint Mulner. I live at 5760 South Bullion Street, which is within the 500 foot distance of the proposal. I object to the proposed change in the current zoning to the current proposal. The objections are as follows. Bullion Street is a two-lane street and it cannot handle the increased traffic that 54 townhomes would generate. There is no mass transit transportation nearby." That's number, sorry, these are numbered, number one, Bullion Street. Number two, there is no mass transit transportation nearby. Number three, it is only in the interest of Hamlet Homes to be granted this change. Number four, the neighborhood is currently only single family homes and such a change would negatively impact the area. Number five, there is no provision in the proposed change to eliminate the desire for well-heeled investors to purchase and then rent the dwellings. Number six, there has always, there has already been excavation on the site and that is indicative that the proposal is a done deal. And then it says, "If the change is granted, it is hoped that an amendment be added that requires a minimum of five-year moratorium be added to prevent the purchase and then renting, renting the units. I understand that hands have been somewhat tied because of recent state legislation, but it is within your power to deny the proposal. Finally, I will be watching the hearing and the decision will impact my vote in the upcoming elections, if that even matters to the commission." That's all.
Great, thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this item? Okay, if there is not, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Jared, do you want to just address maybe a couple of those?
Couple of, a couple of those things to address. The traffic on Bullion Street, obviously we've, we've already talked about, that's leftover from the zone change and Mike addressed it well. That study was, was well done and there's not an impact that needs to be addressed and the, the traffic calming is going to go into play. So I hope that, that discussion tonight helped Mr. Mulner's concern a little bit. About regarding rentals, he's, he's entirely correct. There is nothing in the proposal that would keep somebody that's wealthy enough to own multiple properties from purchasing a home, purchasing a townhome and renting that out to people. That market is remarkably strong in, in the valley and all over the country really. And, and we don't get to restrict that constitutionally.
Jared, does homeowners association have some impact on that?
Homeowners associations can have an impact on that. And there will be an HOA here because it's needed to maintain those open spaces in the private street portions. However, we cannot dictate that the HOA, so an HOA might say, well, no more than 30% of the units can be rental units in the HOA. We can't require that. That's tantamount to, to requiring that they not have rent, not have rentals and we can't do that under the constitution. So they can do it as private citizens. They can enter contracts. We can't do that. So, but they may do that. A lot of HOAs do that kind of thing. And then they have to enforce that and it's difficult to do that. And there's some question about whether they should be doing that, but it's still allowed as I'm understanding it. So.
Mr. Hall, for clarification on that, so their HOA agreement they develop has to coincide with the regulations and the rules that Murray has set forth. So no rentals less than 30 days, all those rules still apply.
Right, they couldn't, it wouldn't, having an HOA wouldn't allow you to, to break any of our zoning rules. They, they can go a little further for things that they can agree with, with each other, but they couldn't, for example, agree to say, well, we'll let, we're going to, as an HOA, allow short-term rentals even though the city says no. They could say, we won't allow short-term rentals if the city says yes, but again, we can't go the other direction.
Somebody asked about the excavation that's taken place on the property. Can we talk about that?
I don't know about it, so I can't tell you, although Mike might be able to tell you. It probably has to do, I'm going to guess.
I'm going to guess soil samples.
Study, is that correct? Getting ready for the environmental is, is what you're seeing happening there.
Right. And the fact that they're doing that testing doesn't, doesn't say that we've already approved the project. It just says they're doing what they can within the limits that currently exist.
It's, it's unfortunate, but people do sometimes think we've already made the deal. That's not the case. It'll be back before you one more time for final.
And actually, I would probably want to clarify to that citizen who's concerned, his, his first point was about the subdivision, about the change in zoning, which has already occurred.
Has happened, that's right. That's a good point. Thank you, Commissioner. The, the zone change is finalized and finished. This is just, this is again, a, a decision the planning commission has to make about a conditional use permit to allow it to be a planned unit development and a preliminary subdivision.
Right. So I want to be really clear to the public that this is, this is not about the zone, about the zoning, this is about the, the actual project at this point.
Right. The zoning has changed.
Right.
We've even had our map updated, which it takes us a while to do. So it's been changed for.
And Mr. Hall, I imagine you're going to speak to this, but also make it clear to the public, we're not the city council, so we're appointed, not elected, so that coming election isn't affected by this and we're going to vote on this topic and it won't be taken to the city council, will it?
No, it will not be going to the city council. These are administrative functions of the planning commission. You're, you're deciding whether it meets the code based on those zones.
Yeah, I'd like to make a point there that the, the decision to change the zoning was not this body's, it was the city council's decision. Our, our role is strictly to review the plans to see if they, if they meet the current, the current, the current, the current zoning and ordinances. And so that's, that's where our purview is and that's what our responsibility is.
That's exactly right. Well said. Anything else I can help the question with tonight?
I think those are the only things from the public comment. I'll bring it back up to the commission for further discussion or motion.
Actually, I just, if we could have Mr. Brodsky step back to the microphone and just clarify the site work that has been, that has taken place on the property.
I mentioned earlier that we had been accepted into the Department of Environmental Quality's voluntary cleanup program. Part of that program is an extensive investigation of the contamination on the site. Everything that you have seen, there's been a variety of borings, test pits, surface investigations to determine the nature of the soil contamination. All of the heavy equipment that's been on the site was for that purpose alone.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's not anything that has to do with construction of our development.
Thank you.
Anything else, Paul, I'm still here?
No, I think we're good. Thanks so much. I think just as far as discussion, you know, as I was reading through the packet and we were talking at the zone change, but now actually seeing the plan and the project, the mix of housing types, I, I really like, I really like how it's been done and laid out. I think that having those houses up front Bullion Street and then having the higher density back behind is a great way to use this property. And I know in the comment, you know, somebody said, we, we only wanted single family houses on this property, which I understand, but I, you know, for myself, I moved to Murray in, in a townhouse. Like that's how I, we lived in a townhouse first and lived there until we grew out of it. And then we moved to a small house in Murray. And I feel like this particular development, this particular project, I know we talk about lifestyle, cycle housing, but this is an example in one project of, of a way that we already are doing that and supporting the general plan and moving forward with that. And I think, you know, there's, even for myself, I look back like, oh, what if I had been able to, you know, move into a place where having a townhouse and then having a house and being able to already be integrated in that neighborhood? I, I think it's going to, the way it's all connected, the way the open space is connected, the way it's all laid out, it's going to just be a really great community. Really benefit, yeah.
Okay. Well, if it's acceptable, then I, I agree. I, I believe that I, I support the staff's recommendation and would move to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Bullion Place PUD subdivision on the property, address 935 West Bullion Street, subject to just the 11 conditions. Yep.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry to approve a conditional use permit for the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Bullion Place subdivision on the property, address 935 West Bullion Street, subject to the 11 conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Wilson. We can take a vote.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion is approved and surprised about. All right, motion is approved and surprised about the public turnout, but I guess that went a little bit smoother than we were anticipating. So thank you so much for, for being here and being with us tonight. All right, we will move on to agenda item number seven, a general plan amendment text of chapter five, land use and urban design.
I'm going to continue being boring, so you're, thanks for being here. Uh, let's see, so item seven is a request that we need to make as staff for you to amend our general plan, and I'll try to explain that as best I can for the, for the record and for anybody who is, is, uh, watching. The, uh, the city council recently, after a recommendation from the planning commission, amended, um, all three of our existing mixed-use zones and added two new mixed-use zones. And in doing that, I neglected to see that we would need a future land use category in the general plan. Zach pointed it out when we were starting to look at applications coming in and making changes to our application form. And I'll, I'll try to explain why that's the case. So as you, as you are all aware, the zoning map that you're looking at a segment of now, this actually shows our existing TOD zone and our new CMU zone and the MCCD, our three existing zones, um, until just recently. As you guys are aware, those zones are placed in the city and, and applied to properties based on the future land use map. This next slide shows the same segment of the city, but the future land use map. And that dark purple section is our future land use category for mixed use. Uh, this sort of salmon color, that's an odd color choice, but there's a kind of a salmon color here that's the city center. That corresponds to the MCCD zone. So in this future land use map, every one of these categories lists zones that are appropriate to consider, to be considered for that area. So if someone comes in and says, I want to change the zoning of this property to X or Y or Z, the first thing we do is check this map and see if it matches. If we've already said, oh, we think things are going to change that direction in that area. Well, there is not a category for, that lists, uh, the VMU zone and the CMU zone. The centers mixed use and the village mixed use zones were not anticipated when we did the 2017 general plan. So we didn't have a category for them, we only had this mixed use and city center. So we started looking at what we would want to do to create a category that corresponded to the CMU zone, the new CMU zone and the VMU zone. And as you know, and Chair Patterson, you pointed this out in the pre-meeting, those zones, they're, they're not reflected anywhere right now, or the places that we're going to consider putting those zones aren't reflected on that future land use map. We, we relied on a couple of other maps in the general plan, one of them being this small area plans map, and that shows these areas where we might consider those zones. So, um, knowing that, we did, uh, the suggestion we've made is that we take the existing mixed-use category. Now remember that city center is the one that already exists and applies to the MCCD, to the downtown. So we're really only dealing with the CMU zone, the TOD zone and the two new zones. If we take the existing category, uh, mixed use and retitle it transit mixed use, that is reflective of the fact that where that zone has been applied, uh, or where, where that category has been applied currently is around the transit stations related to them, to the Murray Central mixed use zone and the TOD zone. And we call the new category, sorry, call the new category Village and Centers mixed use and give it its, its requisite kind of description of why, why it's appropriate, where it might be appropriate, and then tie those two zones to it. Um, and then we retitle, we have an opportunity in doing that to retitle the CMU the way we should as well. So that, it's basically kind of a, a necessary step that we, we could have taken along with the, the, the land use ordinance changes we were doing. Uh, we did not do that and I didn't realize it frankly. I'd love to tell you it's because I didn't want to confuse the issue, but it's because I didn't realize it. So it's something that we need to do as a, I don't want to say a mop-up, but as a cleanup operation for part of what we've already done. Uh, any, any questions about how that would work?
So I, I mean, I guess I do have a question like, um, so anything currently designated as one of those?
Great question.
Right, would, would now be transit?
So this.
Or could it then be one of the other new mixed use?
Well, it, it could be either, but what we would do is take this, this area, for example, is designated mixed use right now and so is this purple area. We would redesignate this category right here, we'd just add transit in front of it, transit mixed use, and that's all it would be.
So what about somewhere like the, the small area plan of the west?
Oh, in the west?
What's that called? The Fashion Place West Small Area Plan? Cause that, I mean, could be transit, but also could have some development of?
Either one could be appropriate.
Village or?
Either one could be appropriate. Neither one of them has been applied. I mean, the one because it didn't exist until, it doesn't exist yet, and the other because no one's asked for it.
So I guess we go forward now looking at?
You have two possibilities.
Okay.
You could, they could apply for, in that area around Fashion Place West, they could say, look, we're, we're transit mixed use, so give us that. And then we don't have a zone that really corresponds to them. So that's another, the, the Fashion Place West plan tells us we ought to consider some different kinds of mixed use. The time constraints of the six-month moratorium didn't allow us to really look at what would be appropriate for the Fashion Place Station area. So we, we're focused on the Murray Central and maybe some version of Murray Central, uh, would be a good, a zone to create for Fashion Place. We'd have to wait until someone wants to do something there and then we can look at whether Centers mixed use is good enough, because Fashion Place West is a lighter duty station, it doesn't carry the volumes that the north and, well, it probably carries the same as the north, but doesn't carry the volumes that the center do. Um, we can look at that going forward, but right now, they could ask for that. Um, I would probably steer them toward Centers instead or Village.
Instead of transit?
Because we don't have a code that directly has been written straight for them. That's one of the things we should look at doing in the coming year.
Okay.
But it's, it's a great question. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hall, I think for folks that have been trying to follow this, and I've entered the conversation late and tried to figure out what the heck's going on, um, I think it might be good if we talk about, and I could be wrong, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it might be good to say that, um, the Village mixed use and the, um, what's the, the Centers mixed use was developed not because we're changing things, but because we had the mixed use zone and then people started requesting to use it in places that we didn't expect. And that's when we realized, wait a second, maybe we need to refine that definition so it fits multiple areas, because it shouldn't have the same impact in these other areas as it did downtown.
Exactly. That's, that's good. I couldn't say that any better than you just said it. All of these, all of these areas that are kind of indicated on this map might be candidates for that. Right now, on the future land use map, you don't see that category. We're, we're creating a new category that isn't labeled or colored anywhere on this map. If somebody comes in and let's just say that it's, um, pick a random property and say that, I don't have anything shown on this map, that might be one. So let's say that a random property comes in and they, right here, they want to go to Centers mixed use and they want to be rezoned to Centers mixed use. We would say, you need to get a general map, a general plan amendment as well, a future land use map, and we'll apply the Center, Village and Centers mixed use category and rezone you to CMU or consider that. And that would be the first time that color would get applied there and it would change. It doesn't exist anywhere on the future land use map yet.
And for residents who are worried about density, because density's been a hot topic for a while now, this is a attempt to control density a little bit, because?
It is.
Initial mixed use definition allowed for large densities because it was in areas that should be, that should be considered. But when we're talking about these other smaller areas outside the downtown area, um, that density in theory should be less. And now by creating these other categories, we're looking at the same kind of development in a smaller density, right?
Highest, your highest density in the CMU zone, which you'd have to do extra things to get, is roughly the same as the base lowest density in any of those, in the CMU or the T, TOD zone. So, and that's indicated on the, we also call out densities in these zones. Um, forty, between 25 and 45 dwelling units the acre, that's, that corresponds to the VMU and CMU densities that are allowed.
Can you explain really quick, since we're talking about that? So up above, you changed the density range from, was that 10 to?
Forty to eighty.
Yeah. You're changing it from 10 to 30?
No.
To 40 to 80?
This came up once when we were looking at this before. In the, in the general plan, when we adopted this general plan and had these densities in, I, I don't have any notes that tell me why we had those densities so low when the corresponding zones allowed up to 80 units per acre. I think it was a typo pulled in from another, from another category.
So this is, this is matching the zones?
The zones that it prescribed, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Back to the, to where you're identifying where they would be in the city?
Sure. So there's more that goes into it than this? So this is the first step, the mapping?
Yeah. So, I mean, the, the TOD zone, that's the one that I look at and wonder, how much is that going to get pulled out from there?
You mean this? The, the, the north end of the city?
No, I'm looking at the, at the, sorry, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the, the transit-oriented, where they can have, where you get some, you get real density there.
Right.
Um, so what's, so, I mean, if we go back, so go back to the, so, yeah, that one. So those bubbles, how, is that representative of, um, of where those zones will be, or is this just more the general area?
These kind of bubbles recognize an area where change could, could be, this, this map was, was produced to, to identify areas of the city that would be areas of transition, likely areas of transition or change where we might want to be flexible in what we did or did not consider for zone changes as a city.
So my, and I, I mean, I think that, and I've, I've, we've had conversations different times about this. Um, you know, I think that, that, that the transit-oriented, oriented development zone or, or that, that area is an area that, in other cities, has led to real density. So for me, what can be done to kind of limit that?
In the, in the, in the actual TOD zone?
Right.
We'd have to pull?
No, I mean, no, to actually limit the zones.
Oh.
Um, it's, it's, it's going to happen. I mean, that's, it's, it's good, you have the trans, you have, you have light rail, it's going to bring density.
If you want definitive borders?
Exactly, thank you, yes. Yep, yeah, yeah, hard lines.
So, so this area here, I, I think what you'd want us, so if we're looking at the zoning map, for example, the TOD zone has been applied to all of those areas in the Fireclay District.
Right.
And I think what I would say to that in terms of TOD is that it has some pretty good hard edges already. Uh, 45th South is a good hard edge to say that. If you're beyond 45th South to the south, and this is one of the reasons we came up with CMU and, and VMU zones anyway, if you're south of 45th South, how likely are you to really be connected to that station, to the point where you ought to get up to 100 units per acre? Not, not likely, 45th South's a significant barrier. If you're east of State Street, how likely are you to really benefit from that proximity to the station? Not as likely. And so we'd want to entertain something more like Centers mixed use that would limit your density somewhat.
Yeah, that, cause I look at that and those are, those, that, that density is, I, it, I, I'm.
Hundred units, yeah.
I know it's coming, I know it's, I, it's, it's, you look at other cities that have gone through the same growth patterns, it's coming. For me, it's about limiting that to a small geographic area. How can, what can we do as a, as a, as a commission if we feel that way, we have a recommendation to do that?
That's a good question. And I, I would answer by saying you kind of already did the first, you kind of already did the first thing. When we looked at the, and this is off-topic a bit, but let's, let's, um, explore it a little bit. When we created the sub-district in the CMU zone, there was formerly just one zone that allowed up to 80 units per acre, period. The first step we took was in 2019, saying if you're a certain distance from the station, you don't get those densities. The next step we took was to, to, to take a hard look at the whole zone and say, you know what, even if you're not in the area of the station, you really don't belong. Um, I wouldn't see this expanding beyond 400 South, for example. I, and that would be my recommendation. Those edges are already kind of established. I don't think you need to shrink it more. Where we'd want to be looking at it, and then, and then limiting the density on the west side in the district, in the west sub-district to 40 units per acre, period. And then tying the densities to station proximity in the east side district. That, that's the step that you'd take logically. To not see it expand further, um, would just be a matter of looking at the boundaries and saying that it doesn't really make sense. We've, we've kind of committed the center of the city to those types of densities and it doesn't belong everywhere. And that's the reason that we wanted to use these other two new zones. At Fashion Place, around the station at Fashion Place, that Fashion Place West Small Area Plan calls it out as a, it's, it's a station and it's important, it's a track station, it's a transit station, but it is more than the other stations, sort of smack dab in the middle of residential areas that are established and older, and we want to be careful with how much density we allow there. Um, right now, if someone were to come in and say, we want to be TOD zoning in the Fashion Place West District, or, sorry, in the Fashion Place West Transit Area, I think we'd recommend against that. We have a station plan that tells us we ought to look at what would be appropriate. So I'd say it's not the right time right now. We might consider VMU or CMU at smaller areas or smaller densities. But I, I don't know what you'd do beyond that. I, I don't necessarily like the idea of, of, of defining a zone's boundary in the ordinance itself and saying, this is where it's applied, these are the properties to which it's applied and no more. Uh, because you want, you want some flexibility to consider something that's reasonable. But most of those areas that are within reasonable distances have already been identified and zoned. When they placed the MCCD zone, they wrote the zone and applied it to a bunch of properties they felt like were appropriate, period. Uh, same thing with the mixed use that we've now subcategorized as east and west and the TOD zone frankly. Uh, we're in our first stages of ever doing it anywhere otherwise, rezoning to those things in, in some other way. We did it on the Kmart site. Um, and I think, I don't want to say we lucked out, but we, we lucked out. It's a fairly isolated site, we did okay, we had minimal changes to the code to make it happen. And when other changes came before the council, they were not comfortable with just doing that again with mixed juice and wanted to take that moratorium and write something else. So I think what you're going to see is not people asking for, we're not going to be entertaining a lot of requests for, uh, changes from a property from whatever it is to CMU zoning or to city center, to MCCD zoning. We're going to see a, a few, if we see any. Mostly you're going to see changes to MC, to the CMU and VMU zones, that's why we wrote them.
So, okay, can I just ask, um, on your other map, so right here on Seventh West?
Am I in the right place?
No, yeah, no, this is good. So Seventh West and 45th?
Okay.
I don't know, yeah. But there, it's geo-zoning right now. And that's one of your nodes on your other map of an area that could maybe change over, right? Like maybe some of those, I think there's shopping centers and things there that maybe, no, over here, east of that.
Here?
Nope, one more, that green east, yeah.
Okay.
So right, that would be Seventh West or Seventh East and 45th South, and there's a lot of business, you know, whatever, geo though. But, so this, if somebody comes to apply and, you know, I don't know, I think it's like a Walgreens or something that's over there and they want to change, they would only be able to apply the Village and the Centers mixed use, right?
They, we, we will take an application from anybody who wants to give us the, the $500 to $1,000 to review it, but we'll, in that case, for example, we would be saying, look, if you're asking for TOD zoning or city center zoning or MCCD zoning, that's not appropriate. The appropriate zoning designation would be VMU and that's, that's what we'll support. If you want something other than that, you won't have staff support. And that usually dictates what they ask for.
But those, I mean, I guess that's kind of the lining up of like where those nodes are, what things are zoned right now and maybe like how things are moving in the future, right? Like that would be an area that?
Yeah.
And so the, the city center retail would be, an example would be, um, you know, a, a mixed use development with retail and condos or apartments on top or something, basically.
Yeah, or even, or even townhomes located to the rear of existing commercial that needs to be rehabbed out front on a, on a larger thoroughfare.
The Kmart example.
Kmart site is a good example of that kind of thing. Although Kmart's at a density that would be beyond?
Right.
Most VMU, it would be more like a CMU zoning. So we'd probably see even slightly lesser densities. And again, too, remember that, it's not just that the map shows that node. We'd, we'd want to look at whatever site that was and say, does it match up to these ideas? Will it, will it, will rezoning them to some kind of mixed use really better rehabilitate that commercial property than otherwise? Will it do these other six things or five more of these nine things? And so that's just the first step, looking at the map.
Commissioner Lowry, I think the perfect examples are the areas in discussion for this are RC Willie and the Sports Mall.
Right. Yep.
Since we're staring at this map, and I, I don't mean to make this conversation longer than it needs to be, but the neighborhood node areas, I've read about those. Can you just quickly explain what those are and, and if they relate at all to these different other areas on this map?
They don't relate as well to the, to the things we're talking about with, with Village Mixed Use and CMU directly as the other kinds of, of deals. We called them out as neighborhood nodes on this map. This map was originally created for us to look at areas we ought to study. So a neighborhood node, and they're the smaller ones, 13th East, for example, how much is really appropriate there? We, we could consider Village Mixed Use there. But that's where the, the tests about whether it's going to really be a benefit to have mixed use zoning there as opposed to detriment would come into play. I, I wish I could tell you, we just titled them neighborhood nodes and community nodes. And then this map came later to show us where we ought to look at being flexible or developing small area plans. We're, we're going to be, we're going to be adding a senior planner position to the crew for the express purpose of trying to look more at some of these things that are in our general plan, telling us that we ought to develop new code or different guidelines for certain neighborhoods to help them develop differently. So that neighborhood node is not meant to only say, here's where I, where you ought to do mixed use. It's actually just identifying an area where two different corridors intersect that can provide neighborhood services to that area, that can serve as kind of a focal point for a larger neighborhood and what ought you to do there. Maybe we don't do mixed use there, maybe that's not what's appropriate. Maybe just commercial at the corners is appropriate, or, or who knows? That's kind of the old way of thinking, but we don't know yet. And so we ought to study those areas. That's what this map actually really says. We're hijacking it. We hijacked it during the moratorium to use it to say, where might we consider CMU and VMU zonings? Because it had already kind of filled at least part of that function. When we redo the general plan in a couple of years, we'll identify areas on the map, on the future land use map that could, that's when we'll take a step and say, even when no one's asked for it, here's where we think Centers and Village Mixed Use category ought to be considered and applied. Right now, we're just hijacking this map to make it use.
Thank you.
Don't tell anybody, because we're just hijacking. Zach, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, thanks.
We don't have a clear picture, we don't have as clear a picture as you'd like of what a neighborhood node really means. We need to study it more to know.
Okay.
We haven't had the staff to do that until, we still don't, but we will. So.
Mr. Hall, that makes me think usually these things are brought to us by landowners. The landowner comes and says, I'd like to change my, we don't go change zones.
Not typically, no. And, and I still would say that would be the case. We still wouldn't change the zone. We wouldn't. I, I don't see us as a city saying, well, we're going to rezone all of this property to Village Mixed Use or Centers Mixed Use. We might though, on the future land use map, consider adding that category, even if no one's asked for it, and saying, we've, we've kind of identified this area and said that if it changes to something, what's, what would likely be appropriate is Village Mixed Use or Centers Mixed Use. But we wouldn't do that. Same thing with zoning. That has been done, but I don't see us doing that with these two new things.
Um, obviously you know way more than I do. But when, when I remember like us talking about the general plan and these neighborhood nodes, and I think this map's actually kind of a cool example of it, oh wait, go back to the one you were on. So this is the, the park, right? But where you come out of the park, that is a neighborhood node, because yeah, it's all residential around it, it's open space around it, but maybe that is a place where you could have, consider other kind of developments, right? Like that was my understanding of it. I'm sure that maybe doesn't help explain what a neighborhood node is, but it's, it's an area that like, there is a different circumstance or a reason to look at like what, what would be in this area.
That's exactly right. So-
Okay. So I don't know.
So are the, are the blues the neighborhood node on this map?
This one is like these purples.
Oh, it's the purples on this map.
The purples on this map-
But they correspond, I think, with the blues on the other.
We have like six different titles for everything. So it gets really confusing, and that's why I say the purpose-
We should always use different colors on, on the maps.
Well, and that's, this map was not, this map right here was not intended to identify just those nodes. In the same way that this one was, where they put these hashed areas on there for us to say, the same purpose, the same outcome though. They put these nodes in here for us to say, like Maren's saying, don't, don't limit yourselves as a commission, as a city, to just what that map says. Be open to some possibilities, because these are areas of change. This is where things could be a little different than just the map says.
Be an ice cream shop?
No. A good example is right there, right? Is that the one you were talking about, Maren? That's the Supret.
Yeah, which used to be, you know, a, a little market, you know, whatever, but it probably wouldn't be allowed based on zoning, right? But if it's a, in an area that could take special consideration, I don't know, that was at least my understanding of it.
Somebody might suggest, but let's be open to it. That was Phil Markham's dream for the Supret to maybe re-
Come back.
Re-incarnate, never know. Yep. So that's, you owe that node right there to Phil Markham. So anyway, that's, that's a good example. Maren, that's a perfect explanation of it. So I appreciate it.
It's hard to then cross-supply now to mixed use and, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're using them for, we're using them in different ways. We are, we are about, we're probably a couple of years from starting the process of redoing our general plan again. It's-
A couple of years?
I know, it seems funny, but it's 2017, we adopted, and we'd been at it for two and a half years at the time. It's time to start the process again, because the way that we move, it'll take us two years to adopt a general plan. So we'll want to start within the next few years, at, at least going over this plan hardcore again and making sure everything is what we want, reassessing this plan. I don't think we need a full reboot like we did in 2017, but we need a good, hard reset on some of the things in this plan.
And, and that's generally done every five to 10 years, right?
Five to 10 years is because it takes planners so long to do anything that that, in that five, in, starting at five and ending at 10? Yeah, that's where we are.
But I think even, I mean, being part of the other general plan process, like there were things like this, changing the villages, it wasn't even on the radar, right? Like, so it really does need, it makes sense why, as you move forward, there's like more things to then look at, you know, as you redo a general plan. Like it's, it's super interesting, actually, yeah.
And again, I think this is our attempt to control density, because never, ever have we ever in the past built smaller than we did, we've never built smaller than we have in the past. We always, density always increases across the world. And we know that's going to happen, so we're trying to control it, trying to make sure-
This was kind of a first step back, and, and hardening up what we'd always had as kind of a position that density belonged in the core of the city where the transit was available, the super higher densities. And, and we didn't really deal with it outside of that. It was the super dense core and the suburbs. And, or the suburban part of Murray, because we're in the suburbs, but the suburban part of Murray. This is an attempt to say there might be nodes where a little bit of density is appropriate, but it's got to be less than that.
Yeah, well, it's because people have come to us and say, hey, I want, builders have come to us and said, I want density here. And we say, wait, how do we handle that?
Right.
Well, and I think it's really interesting too, it said in the, in this reading, when they're talking about, let's see, I'm not going to be able to find it now. Well, just basically, basically mostly that all of the apartments and things, they weren't like this. They weren't integrated in neighborhood nodes, right? Like they're, they're big, uh, complexes that, that then put strains and burdens on school districts or other things like that because of the way that they've been developed.
Right.
And we hadn't had a forward-thinking way of saying, oh, if we're going to add density in smaller areas, what less of an impact would that have on some of those?
Right.
I don't remember where I said that about. I was like, oh, that's a really cool, interesting point.
Part of the reading too. So I'm glad that you guys got that. So we, I stuck that whole section in, even though it just had the one little change, because it might be fun to read, and it is, it is kind of fun reading, and that's what they noted. We have these large sections of single-family zoning and these punctuated areas that are higher-density apartments. And higher density meaning that, they are actually, it's, the zoning is like 23 units per acre, but Zach's been doing their actual density, and many, many of them are a lot higher than that, they're 30, 40.
And really big, big, big units, yeah.
But we didn't have any sort of integrated. We didn't have as much integrated. We actually do, but you got to really look for it. If you drive up 48 South, you'll see duplexes and fourplexes and things like that that are kind of intermixed. We don't have as much of that as would maybe be appropriate, and at least in some of the node areas of the city to kind of intermingle the housing types. We want to do a residential infill housing study. We're working on an affordable housing study now. There's a lot of things we want to do that the general plan tells us to do that we just haven't been able to, to do, but we're getting into it now. So it's going to be exciting years coming up next.
And I think the report also mentions, oh, that's very important. And I think it also mentions in order to support, um, commercial.
Yeah.
Because in this day and age, for commercial to be successful, you have to have people visiting it. You have to have people walking to it. Because otherwise, we have big, huge plots of land like Toys R Us property. You know, we have big plots of land that are just empty, or the Kmart is an example. Twenty years of being, or how many years was it closed? I don't know. Five years of it just being an empty, big, huge parking lot.
Absolutely. It's a great discussion. I appreciate it, guys. I could talk about it all night, and I will. You control the radio dial.
I, I appreciate the maps.
Yeah, they're really interesting.
Colored maps that showed us the percentage and the areas that they're being used for different purposes.
Yeah. If you haven't looked at, if you haven't looked at the general plan in a lot of detail lately, you're missing out. There's a lot of good stuff in there. I know I don't get to look at it as much as I'd like to, so. Anything else I can tell you for tonight? Again, the, the, the item on your agenda, the reason that we have it on your agenda is to amend that part of the general plan to make it match what we just did in the zoning code that I really should have had operating in tandem, but didn't have on your radar for you. So I apologize for that. Anything else? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I will, um, open the, this agenda item for public comment, if anyone would like to comment on it. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it up for further discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the request to amend Chapter 5, the Land Use and Urban Design Element of the 2017 Murray City General Plan, as presented by the staff.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the request to amend Chapter 5, the Land Use and Urban Design Element of the 2017 Murray General, Murray City General Plan. Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Pearson.